I'd like to call the Board of, the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 7th, 2023, to order, and I'll take a motion to go into an executive session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we move this meeting to executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, Harwich Employee Association, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Town Administrator.
Second.
All in favor, Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm aye. We'll return to, I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for August 7th back to order. We started in executive session. No decisions were made on A, and we did not discuss B at all. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a chair malfunction, not a wardrobe malfunction over here. If I topple over, Jeff said he'll haul me back up. Okay, we are going to take the first item under the consent agenda. Item B is the student officers with the police chiefs, so we can let you have more of an evening.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Dave Gilmat, Chief of Police, I'd like to introduce you to Kylie, Kylie Lopes. Kylie has actually been working for us since February of '21, so just about two and a half years as a dispatcher, but she recently applied to be a police officer, so, and as you might imagine, she flew through the process, as she did for dispatch as well. So she is one of two candidates we're presenting tonight. Kylie's born and raised on the Cape, attended UMass Dartmouth, got a bachelor's degree in operations management. So she's, we're asking you to appoint her as a, as a student officer. We're also, unfortunately, Charlie McCaffrey is our second candidate. He was unable to attend tonight, had a conflict in his schedule that we couldn't resolve. However, Charlie is also ties to the Cape, born and raised on Cape Cod, just like Kylie, another great candidate. He studied physical education at Bridgewater, and he's a licensed EMT in Massachusetts. So those are our two candidates for student officer, and day one at the police academy is one week from today, right Kylie? Which is always a shock to the system, but I'm sure she'll get through it, and so will Charlie. So we're very proud and anxious to get them into training and get them back out.
A pleasure to have you here tonight, Kylie, and hope that we get to meet your, your partner soon. Can I take a motion on that, Jeff?
May, Madam Chair, I'm happy to appoint, I move that we appoint Kaylee Lopes and Charles McCaffrey as student officers, as recommended by the Chief of Police.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Joe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before he makes a motion on the consent, I'd like to pull off the July 31st minutes because there's a problem, at least relating to something that I said that's all muddled in this thing.
Madam Chair, before, before we pick up Don's, can we go back to public comment?
That's a very good idea. Public comments, anyone in the public wish to speak? And I have to do my weekly reminder to get close to the mic. I didn't get any calls last week that people couldn't hear us, so I think we're doing better.
How's this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll introduce Bullock Traffic Safety Committee. I'd just like to report, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago on Cross Street, and the signs are up. We're waiting for a couple more signs to be put up, and otherwise, mission accomplished, but thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And thank you to the DPW for their prompt attention to this, getting it done. They're always great to work with.
Thank you very much, Linda. Appreciate all of your work.
Good evening. Is this close enough?
Aye.
Can you hear me? A little closer? All right. Good evening, I'm Ginny Hewitt, the library director, and I'm here because I noticed that a number of local libraries are ending their summer reading program this week or next week, and it's understandable because it involves a lot of commitment of staff time and resources. And by mid-August, the visitors start going home, so the volume of activity drops off as they go home to get ready for school. But what I wanted to make sure you and our community members know is that our summer reading program at Brooks Free Library continues right through Labor Day. Most summer camps close by mid-August, and that leaves parents with a two to three week gap where they're taking off from work, or they're, you know, relying on relatives who may not be used to entertaining youngsters all day, and looking for something fun and, you know, educational and free. So anyway, so that's, that's all, we've always been committed to the working kids of the town and the families, and, and I think that's important, that our kids should have the same opportunity to have the full slate of activities. So between now and Labor Day, when school starts, we have 28 special events for children, tweens and teens, and I was going to start giving you a list, but it's just way too much. I decided it was better to just account. There are special programs, like big events, like Rainforest Reptiles, and another one is Creepy Crawlers and Science Storytellers, and those are paid for by friends of the Brooks Free Library, and then other programs are led by staff, what, from Storytime all the way up to different craft programs, whether making ice cream or slime and things like that. And so anyway, I just wanted to let you know, all of the events are free, and the full list of activities is on our website, which is brooksfreelibrary.org. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ginny. I know my grandparents, the first request is to go to the library. The candy store comes after the library, so thank you. I think we're ready, oh, more public comments.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, and I just wanted to let you all know, because I have more calls about Pebbles than you get about Beach and Dump stickers. Pebbles is not missing. Pebbles has slithered around the property, and part of August is that it is a little hunt for people to come find where Pebbles is now located. She is still on the property. That being said, she has over 200 components to her and still growing, so we thank everyone who's been a part of it. Tomorrow evening, August 8th, we are doing an open mic for poetry from 6:00 to 7:30, and you can come a half hour earlier if you would like to sign up for it. So that's also a free event. And then the following week, on Tuesday, August 15th, at 5:00 PM, we're going to have a discussion on the environmental causes and prevention for breast cancer. So feel free to join us, and when you come over for these events, look for Pebbles. Thanks.
Thanks, Carolyn. Anyone else for public comment? Michael?
Just want to take a minute and wish Cindy Williams, our hard-working Chamber Director, a happy birthday.
Yeah.
Close to your daughters.
Oh, Michael. Throw my cleats.
I thought Michael was signing up to do some poetry. I could kind of see that.
Or at least was going to sing.
I don't know what that would be.
Something about vacations.
He was going to, he was going to lead us in singing.
Any other public comments? Okay. One more item we want to take out of the consent agenda, it's turning into a non-consent agenda. Agenda D I want to do separately, just because there's a little additional information to go with that. So if you could do the somewhat messed up consent list, Jeff, that would be great.
Don, just to make sure you said July 31st.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for July 24th, 2023. I move that we approve the miscellaneous committee reappointment list. I move that we approve the following committee appointments as recommended by the Select Board Interview Committee. Sophia Pilling, Conservation Commission, term to expire 6/30/2026, and Brad, high note, Real Estate and Open Space Committee, term to expire 6/30/2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, five zero, Joe.
I moved, I moved that we accept the gift from the town, to the town, from Guild of Harwich Artists of a Bench, including installation at Dome Park.
Second.
What I'd like to add to that is I found out that the letter went to Eric Beebe, but REC, and, not REC, yeah, REC, hasn't had a meeting yet to talk about it. And I understand benches are usually, there's some criteria around it, where they're to be placed, and how many can be in a certain place. So I'd like us to approve this pending approval of the REC Committee, and their meeting, I think, is next week.
That was part of your motion, Jeff?
That was part of my motion.
That's part of my second.
Excellent. Any other discussion? All in?
I think they meet till the end, I think it's like August 24th or something.
Okay. But I didn't want to hold it up. If we can pass it, I'm sure they just need to work out some logistics. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Joe. Onto new business, and I think that's me. Debrief on Select Board Working Group Session on July 31st, 2023. That was actually a continuation of our first working session, when we talked about the structure of our government, the Town Administrator, the Select Board, the committees, and how they all intertwine. We were fortunate to have Emily Mitchell, Jen Clark, and Ellen Powell join us at that session, and presented some great information about our committees. I think it's in the packet, so I'm not certainly going to read it all to you, but the, some of the highlights are, we have 42 committees. No wonder we sometimes get confused and look for people. Six of them are regulatory, six are required by state law, and nine are under charter. That leaves another 22 that were either a charge of the Select Board or some other agreement. So what we talked about is taking a review of the committees, particularly the ones that aren't regulatory or required by the state or the charter, the other and the Select Board charge, and, and look at them in depth to, do we really need this committee? Do we, do we have enough players, do we not? So what I was going to suggest is we, the way to start is have the liaisons talk to each one of their committees, that is, in those two categories, and see, do we need the committee? Is it the right charge? Is it the right number of people? Trying to do a revamp. Anyone want to add to that? Subtract, agree?
Agree.
Jeff?
The only thing I would like to add, Madam Chair, for the public, is that, did you mention how many inactive committees?
I did not.
Because I think that's important. I think there's.
There's a bunch, that's on the next page.
A fair amount of inactive committees.
There are five, 11, 12. There's 12 inactive committees, so even just cleaning them up and getting them, Emily suggested, or Ellen, one of them, don't remove them, because there is some data there, but get them on a separate page that, that says inactive, so the page is just less cluttered. The other thing the, the group pointed out at that meeting is, we have, I think there were 28 people that have not been sworn in, and I think some of that is confusion when people get reappointed, even though their reappointment letter tells them that, they, they think they've already done that. So we're trying to get those 28 people sworn in. There is a provision, after a certain number of days, and I didn't, I don't know, is 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, if you haven't been sworn in, you're automatically off the committee. I'm sure we've never done that, but it's important that we get people sworn in. So that's where I would like to go, to have our first pass, look at the Select Board charges and the others, and Emily's given us a terrific chart, and Danielle made it big enough so we can read it, so we can see which ones we're talking about, and come back for a later agenda item on what we want to do with some of these committees. Michael?
We've talked about this, this is kind of a group here, A, B, and C. Would it be appropriate to make a motion on C? See no reason to leave here tonight without voting to move or dissolve the nine inactive, more than nine, 11 inactive and dissolved, disbanded committees, and that would certainly give a step in the right direction on moving things from the website. The information doesn't go away, it's public, public records, but I think having it anywhere on the website makes no sense to me whatsoever, and it would clean up a lot, and this would be a good start.
I think they suggested to keep it, because there's some data that's with it. Let me just look at the notes.
Well, we have Emily coming, our Town Committee Jones.
Well, there you go. She can clarify.
Good evening, Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. I hope you're not sick of me from last week. I would advise against removing them entirely from the website, if only because, I want to say in 2012, town adopted the Town of Harwich website as the official posting location for agendas specifically. So we do have them in hard copy, but the official location is the website, so I think segregating them in some way as being obviously inactive or disbanded, separate from our active committees, would hopefully solve any public confusion, but still accomplish the goal, I think of, that we're trying to get to here tonight.
Great, thank you, Emily.
Sure.
Do you want to make a motion on that, Michael?
Yeah, I just don't know what the motion should be now, just to hide them on the website?
Separate them into a different page.
I'm gonna let Jeff make one.
Since he's smarter.
I move, I move that we replace, or, I'm, it's not as easy as you look at it. I make a motion, I move that we place the inactive committees on a separate page of the Town of Harwich's website.
And that included the dissolved and disbanded committees as well?
Yes, it did, Mr. McCaskill.
That would be part of my second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Joe. Did anybody want to add anything else to the conversation about either the working session, or what we're now going to do looking at the committees?
Did we set a date for our next, we were talking about a date.
Working session? We talked about taking the month of August off.
So September.
Sometime in September.
I would just add that I thought that was a great working session, and the only critique that I got, which I'm shocked, was based, based on my recommendation of possibly looking at term limits. The unofficial mayor of Harwich took exception to that. But other than that, I thought it was well-received, and had a lot of, lot of positive comments after people read the minutes, so, and think it's a great idea to review them.
And a huge thanks to Emily, Jen, and Ellen, who really set the tone and, and gave us a lot of data. So thank you again. Okay, then we'll bring that back. Linda?
So what are the 12 that just got?
They're in the packet, there's 11. It's ad hoc.
So it's in the packet?
In the packet, yeah.
Okay.
You want me, I can read them real quick.
Ad hoc, Harwich Port Parking Committee, Harwich Ad hoc Noise Containment Committee, School Committee, which was disbanded in 2012.
Harwich School Committee.
Yeah, Harwich School Committee, Trails Committee, Station 2 renovation, and then on the inactive list, it is Architectural Advisory, Building Code Board of Appeals, Sacquet Tucket Development, Wastewater Support, Wireless Communication Regional Committee, Town Administrative Search Committee. Mary, if I could jump into B, jump back to B, discussion process of comprehensive review?
Yes.
I know we discussed department head involvement in some of the ones that relate to department heads.
Correct.
How do we see that? Is it, is it, should it be initiated by the liaison to each one of these committees?
Yes.
To get feedback from the department head on the committee?
Yes, I thought that's what we said we'd do. Each liaison would go to their, I think I said committee chair, and I didn't mean that. I meant the department head that is associated with that committee, which, you know, for an easy one, let's say golf, you know, you'd go to Roman and Sean to talk about the golf committee and why he wants it, and I, I don't even know if they're in that, but that'd be the first place to talk, and then talk to the committee. But I think the, the employee that that impacts on should have some say in, is that committee helping or not?
And then the, then as part of this, the review of the charges and recommendations from board members on what the charges are, you know, one specifically that I've looked at for years is the Housing Committee, and the charge seems like it's all over the place, and the committee's not working on what's on the, what's on the charge.
Right.
More what picking up, new committee members picking up from past committee activity, but should the board members be making recommendations on the ones we know we're going to keep on the last time the charge was updated, and if it's an accurate reflection of what they actually do, or need to be doing?
Right, I think that's a piece of it, both, again, both with the employee, if there's one. Some committees don't really have an employee, and then with the committee as well, and then your own thoughts on it.
We managed, managed to make a change tonight on 11, which is great, so it's a good start. Is there a timeline on this, where we could expect to put this back on the agenda, so rather than this taking the next two years? Can we, can we work with the Chair and, and put a block of them on an agenda, maybe two weeks from now, or four weeks from now? Is there a reasonable timeframe the board can put on this, so that this isn't another project that's going to stretch out until some of us expire out?
Being, being mid-August, I'd say something after Labor Day, maybe mid, mid-September? Do you think that gives, we've all got, what, maybe six or seven committees?
So rather than wait that.
Not all of whom will fall under this category.
Rather than wait that long, if there's a group that's done, because we're not, we're not going to do them all in one night, if there's a group that's done two weeks from now, can, can we put an agenda item on?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just going a little bit further, because I agree with Michael, we gotta move on this, because it's been a while. I think it's really important if, if we're going to be doing that, like, two of mine, I don't need what I'm going to ask for now, but, because I'm not going to get a charge for the Montemoy School Committee, or the library, but for the other, the other positions that we're all liaisons for, it'd be really helpful, I know it's a work task, but it'd be really helpful if somebody sent us, because they're not all on the face page of our town government, all of the charges relevant to the committees that we are liaisons to, so that we have that to be able to do the homework expeditiously.
I, I still have a packet that Ellen gave us some time ago, that she went through each of the committees and gave us the charge, and there were, in some cases, there were multiple charges from different sources, so maybe I can ask Ellen if that's still accurate, and.
Still would need it broken down by who it is that's responsible, if we're going to be going through, you know, editing what the charges say compared to what we think is going on.
Right, but I think you could take, they're alphabetical, so you could take this document and find your five or six.
Only if it got resented, I'm not going to be able to go back and search six or eight months ago.
What are you looking for, the liaison list?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying.
No, the, the charges for the committees from the liaison list, going to each of the liaisons, like, these are your six charges for you to look over, these are your seven charges for you to look over. If it's broken down by who it is that has relevance, then Michael is right, you get to the point where a couple of weeks from now, you can have a meeting, about six of them, we all have done that based on what's actually the current charge and the recommendation for the person who's the liaison for that. You could start tackling that methodically.
Okay, I think I can get this sent back out to you, from Ellen or Danielle.
That, that would list the last current charge of each of them.
The last current charge. Now, this is, this wasn't done yesterday, this was done maybe a year ago, when Ellen was still in, in, in her seat.
I don't think Jeff's going to find that on his computer.
No, I'm going to get this sent back out to you, I'm sure we can find it on the computer here. Anything else? Yes, Michael?
And I did ask Ellen to send me mine, and she did.
Yeah.
Four, I think, of the seven she was able to find in the file. So I do think we're going to find some that we might have to go back to Linda Sebula for. Because there are definitely missing charges, but I'm going to start with the ones that have the charges.
That was part of the.
Then I'll call Linda.
Part of the reason for the request is, where are we missing stuff?
Right.
So you think there's some that we don't have charges for?
Well, traffic safety was a, was a perfect one.
Right, right.
We couldn't find it in our records, but the person that wrote it, who I keep referencing, had it in her records, and when we voted it, so.
Yeah.
Some of them, yes, I think we're going to have to do some digging.
Okay. I will get what we have sent out to everybody. Uh-oh.
Hi again. I just wanted to mention, so if you're looking at that master governance spreadsheet, it includes the multiple governance citations, both the Clerk's Office and the Administration Office were able to locate, so that's any charter, bylaw, state law, or Select Board charge that we could find, and if there were charges, we included the year of adoption charge and the most recent charge, so those are all things within the last few weeks we have been able to locate. So if it is cited on that spreadsheet, I'm sure we could get you a copy, if that's helpful, whether that's just charge, or whether it's any governing reference, we could provide that to you.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
One more.
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
I move that we move the, I move that we move the Forest Committee to the purview of the Conservation Commission pending their approval of it.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion is, that's another one that we have not, as long as I can remember, not actually had a Forest Committee. The police chief, I believe, and miscellaneous, I mean, fire chief in the miscellaneous is our forest person, but it, in speaking with the clerk, it's appropriate to send the Forest Committee to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Am I speaking correctly? Thank you.
You had a second?
I did.
You seconded it.
Oh, I didn't hear the second.
I did.
Any further discussion? Do we want to talk to, oh, it's not, it's Amy, right? Okay.
The Conservation Commission.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just ask if Town Administrator could send that note to his department head, Amy, to bring up at a conservation meeting. It's not a whole lot that goes with this, since we haven't had one, and as long as I've been here, but it should be an easy lift.
Good.
Progress, I love it.
Anything further on A, B, and C, which we've kind of melded into one there? Okay, shall we go on to D? Can I have a motion, Jeff?
I move that we vote to approve the proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Town of Harwich.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero, Joe.
I move that we vote to a point, sorry.
This one, we're going to table, I'm sorry, we're going to table E and bring it back at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Move to F. F is a discussion on upcoming changes with Comcast. I'm guessing you wanted to lead that, Joe?
Say again.
Discussion on upcoming changes with Comcast? Did you want to lead on that? No? Deer in the headlights here.
So I didn't hear the word, do I want to what with that?
Did you want to lead the conversation?
Um, sure, what I would.
I flipped the mic.
What I would say is, in your packet, we have a memorandum from our Harvard Channel 18 Station Director, and I would like to lead right to her on this presentation.
Okay.
I don't want to be too excited.
You can sit down, Jamie, if it's going.
No, that's okay, I'm going to be brief.
Okay.
Jamie Goodwin, Channel 18 Station Manager. The town was noticed by Xfinity in June that they're going to be changing 18 to 8, which is just upsetting, because I like 18, that's where I feel like everybody's so used to tuning in for. There'll be a little, some changes. The Town of Chatham has just decided to call themselves Chatham Television, I think other towns are following suit. Barnstable, Dennis, Yarmouth, Harwich, and Chatham are all going to be affected. I don't know. I don't know if other Cape Towns are going to be switched over at some point. We're just going to have to rebrand. There's really nothing we can do because it's in our contract. They've noticed us 30 days in advance of this change, so. Bill Galvin knows about it, we're going to put a little blurb in the paper. We'll advertise it on our website. In the letter, they say on or about August 17th, which is not really my favorite, so we'll have to see what happens on August 17th if we get switched over. I do have a contact, and I have reached out to them collectively with a group of other Channel 18 directors, so we haven't heard back from them either. And there should be something coming out in the Cape Cod Times in the next couple of weeks about this change as well.
Are you suggesting we change your name to Harwich TV or?
Not a, well, you can't call me Channel 18 after August 17th because we won't be Channel 18. We're going to be Channel 8, which actually feels like a huge promotion, like maybe I should be like a television news lady, but we will have to have a discussion of what the department will be called moving forward. We have to rebrand all of our station IDs, our YouTube channel, our on-demand channel. There's a lot of little things that have to be done. It's nothing that we can't handle when we obviously don't have a choice, it's in our contract with Comcast. Which you can find on the town's website, if you go to the Channel 18 button, there is a link on the left-hand side to our entire cable license and cable agreement, in case anyone would like to read it.
Any questions for Jamie, Julie?
Just one, when does the contract expire?
It expires in August of 2031, August 1st, 2031.
Okay, maybe we should calendar that, putting in a clause that requires them not to change it in the future.
We were changed in the past, we were 19 a, a long time ago through Cape, Cape, or no, Media 1. And when we only had one station in the town, we were 19, and then the town obtained a public education and a government, and they were separate. And then they, their call signs changed.
It's just a lot of work for you and other towns, I mean.
I mean, we're all going to have to go through it, so I'm, and we're in communication, we're all in an email thread with the executive director of Cape Media because they are also getting changed from 99 to 9. So we're all discussing on how the best way to go about making all these small changes are, so.
Did they explain to you, why, why do they make those changes?
No explanation.
Unbelievable. Feels like Comcast when you call them, you know, to complain about your wifi, it's like, whatever.
We do, I would like to say we do have a very good agreement, and we are one of the first towns that gets like immediate help when we do have an issue. I would like to make a note that the educational channel is not changing. So Channel 22, which is the Montemoy Regional School Committee channel, is not changing, that will remain 22.
Okay.
But public and government aren't being changed.
Anybody have any other questions for Jamie? I'd just like to thank you for your positive approach to what is a big deal for you to change, so thank you. And for the public, if you go to 18 and you don't see it, switch to 8.
Switch to 8. We will be putting it out on all of our social media, we're, we're going to try to keep people informed. You'll probably be sick of hearing about it at some point.
And still yet, we'll go to the wrong channel.
Yeah, I also will be going to the wrong channel, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be my fault, Mary, don't worry.
Pick up a poem about it.
Yeah, it'll be my fault.
I'll put a picture of you on that channel.
G, discuss annual non-resident taxpayers' meeting. I think we've had a preliminary discussion about this that in the past, since COVID, I believe. All right, Don, you trying to save me?
I, I think so. The whole concept of having the annual meeting was as a mechanism to allow people who only were here part-time to engage in the government. It was a special meeting set aside for them. But with televising the meetings and the ability for people to like write emails directly to us, I'm not sure what the endeavor is other than what we had agreed to a few years ago, which is having our department heads, you know, film some things that were placed on YouTube so that it, get a broad overview of, okay, what does this department do, what does that department do? And individual complaints and stuff could be easily handled electronically where they couldn't be like 15 years ago when we were holding those meetings.
What is your suggestion?
Just to have, you know, refresh whatever it is that we have available for the non-resident taxpayers that are delivery points from department heads and just leave it go, let it go at that.
I agree with Don. We had, um, I thought we've had great success in having the town administrator do a State of the Union, the Fire Chief speak. Anyone with an important project, we do a thing that goes on the website, they can watch it anytime they want. It seemed to be more beneficial for any of us that sat through the non-resident meetings. Very many, more residents came than non-residents. About equal to what we have in the room tonight, minus four.
And that's where I was going, I thought that's what we were finalizing, is that we're not going to have a meeting, but rather repeat the, and I assume that you're prepared to do that, Joe?
We have a department head meeting later this week where we can discuss the content for that.
Great. You don't need a motion, just a discussion. Okay. Can I take a motion on H?
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the Harwich Fire Association renovation of 203 Bank Street.
Second.
Any discussion? There, there is not a letter in the packet, I recognize that, but Bruce has written a couple of letters explaining why. And I know that we're all in favor of, it's, we have three apartments upstairs over that fire station. He can't do it with present zoning, so it's going before the planning board, I believe, the 22nd. So I'll get a letter drafted and send it on its way. Old Business A. Oh, do we have to vote, yes, do we do have to vote?
Made the motion.
Don seconded it.
Don seconded. Now you explained, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, Joe. Want to take H? I'm sorry.
A.
Old Business A.
I move that we vote to waive the town's right of first refusal for the sale of 17 Woody Glen Road, formerly known as 140 Oak Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, if town administrator could give us an update, maybe cover the, the points that are in our assessor's email. I know I brought this up last week and we tabled this two weeks ago.
Right.
Related to getting back the taxes that weren't put on it. They had a discount because it was ag land. Can we make the public aware, Joe, of what we're doing?
If I can have a moment, I'm looking up information that Attorney Bill Crowell dropped off this afternoon. If I can just rely upon that, Madam Chair?
Yes, you can.
So as you'll see in the packet dating back to July, and as Board Member McCaskill made reference, it was in your last agenda. Attorney Crowell today dropped off a, an affidavit which was required under MasterCard Law 61A, Section 14, indicating the, that it is a notarized affidavit regarding mailing of notice of the intent to sell. So that element sort of closes the loop. In his information to the town, he also confirms that the question before the board is whether the board wishes to either waive right of refusal and then we, the town, would document that in a letter for Attorney Crowell to have on the record, or if the town wanted to pursue your right to purchase, and the purchase would be subject to the price of $849,000. Additionally, he has indicated, as our assessor, assessing director had noted before, that the tax collector's office will be collecting from the pri, the current owner, any real estate tax subsidy that is recoverable by the town. So that was the information provided before. Attorney Crowell is confirming that that transaction will happen through the town when the sale is executed. So the question before the board is whether you should waive right of first refusal or seek to purchase. Staff recommendation is that you waive right of first refusal.
And we've taken a motion and a second on that, right? Michael?
I guess my follow-up question is, does this automatically happen? Or are we going to have to then go after somebody for taxes? And what's our recourse if those taxes are not paid if we waive a right and the property closes? Is there anything guarantees us that we're going to get that?
Well, generally speaking, yes, that, that the parties have acknowledged through their attorney with the affidavit that the town will be recovering those taxes. Taxes we would not otherwise be going after if the property remained in chapter lands. So then it's really if there's a refusal to pay, that's a serious charge of tax avoidance and everything that goes with that.
Thank you.
And it's done at the closing, correct?
No.
It's part of the closing?
It's, uh, my understanding is the waiver is part of the closing, not the tax collection.
Oh, okay.
But the tax collection is initiated by the sale. It's no longer under the protection of the statute, that's why we can go after it.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you.
Before we take a motion on this next topic, can we discuss it?
Sure.
So the agenda item in your memo today don't seem to match. The agenda item is asking us to sign a permanent easement totaling 760 square feet for Mast dot as Saquon Tucket Harbor sidewalk installation. What in fact are we trying to do tonight?
Through you, Madam Chair, Link Hooper, DPW Director. This form that the board is being asked to execute is a Mass DOT environmental form. It is simply stating that with the permanent easement that is needed, that we are not losing any utility of the property. And I believe I quoted the exact verbiage in my memo to you. The actual easements will be coming probably November-ish. There's been a lot of activity on the sidewalk project. We had the 75% submittal that VHB did in April. We, and that included both the design plans and the right-of-way plans. We have gotten comments back from them, from Mass DOT, on the design plans, and we've gotten three separate batches back on the right-of-way plans, and they're still not done. So right-of-way is still under review. This form was, was simply, and I've never seen this form, I've done a bunch of these projects before, and I initially didn't know what it was either, and I had to call the project manager to find out. But it's simply a form that is stating that we're not, we do not believe, and we agree and concur with Mass DOT, that by moving this pole and then having an aerial trespass, that we're not adversely affecting the use of this property. The reason it's before you is because the property, Saquon Tucket Harbor, is waterfront property. Probably why I've never seen one of these before either.
Thank you. Do you have the email? No, so I'm just thinking based on what we're about to vote to approve. It is the second paragraph of what the actual motion would be approving an environmental form. Mary, Joe is-
Joe?
Just that we also have the diagrams larger than what's in the packet.
Right.
There's two diagrams, one that you can see, one on the reverse side, if anybody has any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, certainly.
I could elaborate on that a little bit. The outline in green is the actual easement. The reason it's much bigger than the aerial trespass is because Mass DOT requires, I believe, a five-foot buffer so that if they ever had to get to the wire, they can do it without having to trespass.
Okay.
So it's not like, and the whole reason is to move one of the poles, there's a boatload of poles that are in the way, and the pole needs to make room for the sidewalk, and that changes the trajectory of the lines.
Just one pole?
Just, well, no, there's a lot of poles that affect the town of Harwich properties, just one.
Just Saquon Tucket, it's just one pole?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. You have different language for the motion, Jeff?
My esteemed colleague to my right will make the motion.
Are we okay and?
I'm okay with that.
No, I'm not talking to you, sorry.
He's not talking to you either.
Even though you're smarter than him, huh?
I'll just sit here.
Sorry, Jeff. Mary, I would just ask that, given the notice to the public, I'm personally comfortable because we're signing an environmental form, not a, an actual easement tonight.
Right.
I do think the address was given, I'm comfortable with it, but maybe Joe could weigh in on whether or not he thinks we should be voting this tonight based on the agenda item.
Joe?
So yes, I would recommend, and we have the language available within the packet. Additionally, the state has informed us that with regard to this de minimis impact determination, which is what you'll be voting on, the state did have a legal ad notice advertised in the Cape Cod Times on June 14th. Prior to that, there was a public hearing regarding the entire project on January 17th of 2023, and they indicate that no significant concerns or issues were raised by public comment to date to the, to the state on that matter.
Okay.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the environmental form agreeing that the permanent aerial easement required in order to move a utility pole for the sidewalk construction, Harwich Port sidewalk construction, will not adversely affect the activities, features, or attributes of the property, and that is related to Route 28 at Saquon Tucket Harbor as presented.
Second. And further to have the chair sign.
I started it with the chair to sign.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. I spoke a lot.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you, Link.
Okay, we're on to contracts, Joe. Actually, I guess that one's you, Jeff.
Madam Chair, would you ask Mr. McCaskill if I could say?
Would it be all right if Jeff made a motion?
I move that we vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign a contract amendment in the amount of $6,500 for Spencer Preservation Group for design services for Brooks Academy Museum.
Second. Or should I check with Michael?
Simply said I wasn't speaking, Dan.
But you and I are speaking, so I'll second it.
I was following Robert's orders as I was talking to the chair.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? I find it a little disappointing, I have to say, that, what, a year into the project and we're just noticing some of this? But that doesn't take away from voting for the $6,500. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Five, zero, Joe. B?
Madam Chair, if I could, related to items B and C. So what you should have in your packet are two documents that relate to the same overall project. And one of them was approved by the board, however, we were advised of changes by council for the town in consultation with council for Harwich Conservation Trust. And so what you have in front of you under item B is a grant agreement between the town of Harwich and the Harwich Conservation Trust. This is all relative to the Coldbrook Ecological Restoration Project. The dollar amount tied to that is 1.5 million. As you may know, the town, under an article back in 2017, for wastewater purposes appropriated over 9 million. That's where the money is coming from for this. And so we're asking that you adopt the grant agreement, and it's going to be in the amount of 1.5 million. It's not going to be a lump sum payment, as you'll see in the language there. It's as the construction work is done by the contractor for HCT, they send paperwork to the town. I review it, and then we approve the disbursement of funds for that construction purpose. So that's the essence of what the grant agreement gets to. The license agreement, now that the town does not own around that property adjacent to 203 Bank Street, it's necessary for the two parties, the town of Harwich and Harwich Conservation Trust, to execute this license agreement, which would allow our staff to access upon the property to make sure that all of the ecological and conservation needs and programs that we have are being met. So that's why you have the two documents in front of you.
Can, can you just explain the difference between B and what we voted on two weeks ago on the 24th? ago on the 24th?
So I think with item B, what has changed, let me just go through. There was, the main change really is if you look at page three, under conditions, we've confirmed that the authorized representative would be me as administrator or designees for that. When we went through the document, we were acknowledging that some of these provisions, given how long it's been taking, have actually already passed, but the town is acknowledging that we're aware of those. That was related to procurement. It's really just that the parties involved are fully in agreement with how the money is going to be processed out.
Thank you, because we were concerned. Michael?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we reconsider the vote of July 24th, 2023, to execute a grant agreement between the town of Harwich and the Harwich Conservation Trust relative to the construction of Coldbrook Ecological Restoration Project for 1.5 million.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Staff would appreciate that reconsideration so you can adopt the document in front of you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Now we can have a fresh motion.
I move that we vote to execute a grant agreement between the town of Harwich and the Harwich Conservation Trust relative to the construction of the Coldbrook Ecological Restoration Project in the amount of $1.5 million as presented in tonight's packet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
I move, well, would you like a discussion first, or do you want to...
I'd say take the motion and then we'll discuss.
I move that we vote to execute a license agreement between the town of Harwich and the Harwich Conservation Trust relative to the construction of the Coldbrook Ecological Restoration Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and with apologies to the board, we talked last time, that anything that I didn't talk about at the last meeting, I will be going through this evening.
Looks scary.
First is an announcement of an appointment. Pleased to announce the appointment of Reagan, Reagan Wilda as our program specialist too for the community center. Ms. Wilda is set to start in the new role on Monday, August 21st, 2023. This fills a vacancy in the COA Department. I know that our, excuse me, the community center, I know our community center director, assistant town administrator, and I all support this, and that's why I've made that recommendation again, is Reagan Wilda, who will be starting with us on two weeks from today.
That's great. Be sure to welcome her for us.
Absolutely, and thank you. Now just confirming, I think everything else is going to be contracts, so if you'll bear with me. First, there is a procurement that was approved through the, the Fire Chief, and this is related to procurement of gear. It's the replacement program. This specifically is six sets of gear for existing firefighters. So it impacts upon three firefighters, captain and two lieutenants, and it's for six sets of morning pride coats and pants, six sets of Pro Series boots, six pairs of firearm or gloves. I'll leave it to Chief LeBlanc and the deputy to explain what that is. We had 30,000 that was appropriated. The cost for these was $26,106. And so that procurement was approved. Similarly, there was procurement of gear for new hires. As you know, the town was very fortunate to bring firefighters into Harwich. They're not new. That's the beauty part of that. There was a great ceremony several weeks ago, and to equip those folks, there was a contract for $36,952 for equipping those four firefighters in Harwich. Fire Department also procured thermal image cameras. This was in the amount of $61,136. It's eight thermal camera kits with truck charges, battery warranties, and all of that for several years. As a condition of the grant, we were required to contribute non-federal funds, equals or greater than 5% of the funds awarded, which we did in the amount of 3,400. And then the remaining comes out of the organ object budget for the Fire Department, so that was approved as well. Contract for VHB Incorporated for stormwater permit review. This was a, the funding comes out of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Article 15. Presently has a balance of over $121,000. This is a contract not to exceed 50,000, and it is, the work they do is to write written reports and cost estimates presented to the board, select board at public meetings, or consult with staff regarding all matters related to our stormwater permit review process. VHB for a subdivision review. This is a contract in the amount of $30,000, and the town is relying upon VHB to assist the planning board for engineering reviews in the absence of a town engineer. I gave the dollar amount, I think, on that one, right?
I think you did.
Thank you. Contract for $21,268 going to Cape Cod Flip, and this is when the air conditioning units and the Cranberry Valley Golf Course clubhouse unexpectedly failed during the week of June 25th. You remember that as one of the hotter weeks. And so we were able to get that system back online, and the, a cost of that again was $21,268 to get ACs back in the clubhouse. Going back to Brooks Academy, as you know, we're progressing through the project. So related to that, the, we partnered with Rise Engineering for heat pumps at Brooks Academy Museum. This is funding that was supported through Article 47 at our last town meeting, and the heat pumps are in the amount of $61,517. And what it does is replaces and removes the 14-year-old air conditioning units with high-efficiency, high-velocity heat pumps. This will also alleviate the need to replace the steam boiler, which failed in that building back in December 2022. Town has a general contract with Rise Engineering in the amount of $25,000, and this is for supportive facilities and specifically boiler, or excuse me, design and scope of work for the boiler and generator replacement at 204 Sisson Road. I think board members know that we generally do very well with Rise Engineering, and this contract for design and scope of work on those boilers is 25,000. Town executed a contract with Tri-County Contractors Supply Incorporated. This was for the Department of Public Works, and it is for the replacement of a mowerhead in the amount of $10,457.40. And mercifully, last one here, contract with Hub Tech Technical Services LLC. So this is the annual contract supporting IT on our servers and all that. And that was, this is for network monitoring, preventative maintenance, remediation, and security, and it is for the current fiscal year in the amount of $59,940. And that, Madam Chair and members, concludes my town administrator's report.
Thank you. Select board members' reports. Don?
I didn't do anything nearly as extensive as that at the end.
None of us did. Julie?
I don't have anything.
Jeff?
I don't have anything.
Michael? The only thing I have is I went to One Cape for one day last week. I just went to Tuesday and hit a couple of seminars on housing, which is always what draws me. And I got a bunch of things that I'll probably share with the trust, but the one that struck me, one of the guys opened his presentation with, or maybe it was a woman, I don't remember. The Cape has done a great job preserving open space and historic buildings, but has done a horrible job preserving people and what we've done with housing. So I thought that was pretty compelling. On that very sad note, I'd look for a...
Move to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.